workshop without Ms. Powers also the superintendent is unable to be here today as well. So we have some items on the agenda for our special meeting and then at the end of the special meeting, we will have our workshop meeting. We have a couple items on the workshop meeting to go over as well. We'll have citizen comments both at the start of the meeting and at the end of the regular meeting, I'm sorry, the special meeting. So if you would like to comment, there are green cards in the back room. If you could fill that out and bring it up, you can address the board and we welcome public comment. Before we adopt the agenda, I do have an item to remove from the agenda and that is that item, removal number three, C1, to approve the 2018-2019 agreement between the school board, Citrus County Board and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for Sheriff's Security Services, which was supposed to have been distributed, is being pulled from the agenda. And Mr. Brad Shaw, I advise that the attorney or the sheriff's office attorney has not completed the contract, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, contract finished last Monday and I have a [inaudible].
Okay, so we do not have an agreement between sheriff and school board now for security services because they haven't seen the contract.
What does that just cover right now?
That covers football game, [inaudible]. I think they're still doing it.
Right.
I contacted them last year, on vacation the week before, and I contacted them Monday, on Thursday, [inaudible].
So we don't have any reason to believe this is anything other than we're just timing a little working out.
Probably more than just [inaudible].
That's what I think.
Okay. So if you would make a note that that is pulled from the agenda. With that, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
Approved. Second?
Motion by Ms. Bryant. Second by Ms. Counts, to approve the adoption of the agenda. It's recommended by the superintendent with the one item being pulled. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes four zero. The agenda has been adopted. Yes, I am. Yes, I am. Ms. Bryant, has our opening exercises today?
I do. You know, we had reads performed for us last time. Metal Soprano, they were all excellent. But Metal Soprano that stood right here, oh my goodness, she's awesome. And I thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. So today I just have a little something to read to you. No kids, no music, sorry. You will never be sorry for thinking or acting, or hearing or judging, for giving your enemies, for being candid and frank, for helping a fallen brother, for being honest in business, for thinking before speaking, for standing by your principles. We need those kind of principles here, don't we? Yeah. Okay. For stopping your ears to gossip, for bridling a slanderous tongue, for harboring only pure thoughts, for sympathizing with the afflicted, for being courteous and kind to all. My standard pledge? My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Okay, we have opportunity for citizen comments. Is there any body that would like to address the board? There any green cards? Anyone like to address the board? Okay, see, we're going to move on to our first item of business, the under school support services with Mr. Bishop.
Good morning. We come before you today to seek approval of the study recommendation by Georgia F. Young Incorporated for the Roger Weaver Educational Complex evacuation route. If you recall, I know the board is very well aware that we have been pursuing emergency ingress egress to that complex. That complex is pretty large in size, as we all know, and we definitely know there's a need for some emergency ingress egress. If you recall, the staff came before you in July to bring forth a couple of concepts or ideas. At that time, the staff was provided some feedback and some direction. We're coming for you today to bring back a summary or recap of the concept while including and being cognizant of the feedback we received back in July. Once again, this is very conceptual at this point. The whole process of the whole idea behind coming for you today is to get approval so we can move forward to the next step, which would be move to the design phase where it would be actually drawn, designed, engineered. If it is the board's will, I would like for myself and staff to come back before the board once we get to about 60% completion of those drawings and designs because we want to make sure we keep you well informed as to the progress we're making. Our goal would be, if it is the will of the board and the direction of the board to approve this concept today, is that we go into the design phase and our goal would be to be on track to start moving dirt no later than the very beginning of next summer. I've spoken with Mr. Stokes and asked him if at all possible, we'd like to try to begin that process sooner. With the way the land out there, we feel we can do work while, some of the work while school's in session on the east side of the project site. But I think you'll like the design concept that we're bringing for you today. I think it addresses a lot of the concerns you guys posed back in July. So at this time, I'd like to invite Jerry Debowski from Georgia F. Young to come up to go through a very brief overview of the project and hear your thoughts. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Thank you, board members, for having me back. As Mr. Bishop said, we were here last July, give you some concepts, listen to everything that you had to say. We've got some great ideas that complemented what your thoughts were and that's what we're going to show you today. For the record, I am Jerry Debowski with Georgia F. Young, Senior Traffic Engineer, and I've been brought on board by your school board and essentially take a look at the situations out on the La Canto Complex, Roger Weaver Complex. This is essentially the master plan of where we want to go with safety improvements, traffic improvements, and of course, the evacuation route. On the very right side of the screen is the southern portion of the complex and if you remember, last time we had considered a roundabout to replace essentially your guard that essentially is directing traffic and trying to keep things organized. And we actually came out here when it was a very heavy rainstorm and she had to leave the intersection and it was quite chaos. So a roundabout essentially takes care of itself and we're proposing that at this time as a concept. If you move a little to the left of the screen, you'll see some shaded areas above the parking lot. That is where we've reconfigured the parking lot based upon your comments last July, where it's much easier to maneuver around the entire parking lot. Come out some extra exits to take you onto the road, which will lead you out of the complex. So we have revised the parking lot to make it essentially two-way on each aisle and you can come out onto West Educational Path at several points. The third item that we took into consideration from your comments is to get to the evacuation route, which heads upward on the screen, is we're going to provide a small little connection road between the northbound and southbound West Educational Path. It would make it the quickest way to get onto the evacuation route for not only buses but EMS and fire. The sheriff would now have easy access to go north or south throughout the entire complex. And then as you proceed up the slide on the very top end, that's where we will connect in with the current road that serves Public Works Complex and that will be the end of the evacuation route on our property that can be used during that time. Also in that area is a large drainage area that at this point is a concept. We're looking at that outlined area to where we're probably going to need to fix some drainage for the improvements and we're still going to leave the existing road in place and work the drainage around that. So it may remain as a very light asphalt or a shell road, but it could be used in the future also, so we're going to keep that in place per your direction, per your thoughts. So a more close-up look at what we're calling two phases of the project. Phase one is to clearly, we need to design and build the emergency evacuation route. So on the right side of the slide is that big drainage area that we will work around not only the new emergency route, but also keeping the existing road that serves back into the minor educational area and around the Technical Resource Center. So because it's a concept, we don't know how large that drainage area has to be at this time, but we believe that everything can fit in that area and take care of what water management and other folks would need as part of a permit. Then as you follow the emergency evacuation route to the west, it then ties in with West Educational Path and you'll be able to go to the right and head north. You'll be able to go across the median and then it's south. And if you're in the parking lots during an emergency situation, you would no longer have to use any of the other routes. You'd be go out of that emergency route if the sheriff decides that that's the best route to take to get in or out under an emergency situation.
Could you just go back to that drainage area one more time? So, you know, I think some of the board members, I know I've been kind of outspoken about that road and not losing that road and I know you said that that would be, that would be still intact or in place there, but we don't know the size of the retention area that's needed. So it wouldn't be better if we just took that out of the plan that it looks like we're approving a plan that's going to take that road out? You know, and then I heard you say something about a shell road. Are you saying that that road may have to be torn out because of something to do with drainage?
At concept at this point, I think the road could remain as is as asphalt, but we would pipe underneath it to take any water that sits on the north side and has to get down to the south side to the larger area. So the road could remain as is, just put piping underneath it to get the water back down to the south.
Okay.
But certainly that would be the specifics, that would be captured in the design phase, probably to be honest. And if it's definitely the will of the board to say, hey, we want to make sure what we do is to leave that road, would we just make sure that we're engineering that, working in here, that we can include that, that category of [inaudible]?
I have two thoughts too. One, I see that you've shown a gate in that access road from West Educational, the westbound, I'm sorry, the, so where you were saying that in between the two roads there. What would that look like and why would we need to have a gate there? Why would we not want to just have access to the public to use that as well if they needed to loop back around?
The one concern we have is if you're going west on an emergency route, somebody could then go into that new little median opening that I put and they may try to turn into the parking lot. Or if you're coming up West Educational Path and the traffic might be backed up a little to the north, you might want to cut across there and sneak into the parking lot. We prefer to keep them in the new left turn lane that we're designing and have them all come in at one point into that parking lot. So it's a temporary gate to pretty much be used during emergency points. Otherwise, people may use it to try to sneak in and avoid the backup.
But if they, where you're proposing the gate, aside from cosmetics that I'm thinking of there, they're going to pull into some of that area anyway because the gate's going to be farther in, so it looks like, you know, you could actually stack quite a few cars. I could see that being used as parking unintentionally on our behalf because of that. So I just, if you don't make that through, I just can see that we may unintentionally create some new challenges right in that section there, so that's just something to think about. And then, you know, one of the things that we've talked about with this whole thing is La Canto Primary's parent access and loop. Was there any thought, as I'm looking here, of using the emergency evacuation route to come down to about where the retention area is and then loop back and then make that as a parent loop? So that you put people on there and then bring them back there and then you bring them back out because you could stack all the cars and not have them in front of TRC?
Yeah. Let's go back, this project began with the evacuation route and as you know, this is an impact fee fundable project. We've already gone through the consulting process, worked with the county administrator. So we have to make sure that the use is going to be congruent with the acceptability of using impact fees. Does that make sense? I can tell you, I have gone out and spoke with Ms. Lofton myself about parent pickup. She thinks that, I will clear it up, a lot of these cross, what we currently have, the cross directional traffic situation out there, she thinks that's going to help somewhat. She said that she has shared her concerns when Mr. Debowski and his team went out and met with all the stakeholders out there, that she did voice her concerns with the parent pickup loop. So she feels relatively confident that some of her concerns might be mitigated through this process. But to answer your question very point-blank, no, we have not thought about using the emergency evacuation route for parent pickup.
Because I'm thinking the emergency access would still be there. It wouldn't change that for that purpose, so the, you know, that was the primary and is the primary function, but you have a dual use, so I don't know why that would impact, I don't know why that would have an impact to impact fees.
And it may or may not. I'd have to defer to Mr. Dixon on that. Mr. Dixon, do you have any thoughts on that?
It's a good idea. But I would just stick with the impact fee part for now and maybe we can explore it.
Explore it.
And it may be, you know, going back to kind of as Mr. Gott's saying about the road and the DRA, maybe instead that's where there could be a future road or, and it doesn't even have to be on this plan, but if it's at least something that staff knows, hey, we could come back and do that if IPS's situation doesn't improve. That's what I'm thinking. Just thoughts for us to think about. It's easier to think of now when it's cheaper on pay without that.
To answer both your questions, that gate that we're talking about can actually move closer to West Educational Path to deter anybody from even going in there. At one time, we actually showed two gates for both sides and that may be the better design to do. Your second question is, an original thought was to put a, almost like a loop road just before the retention area that could be used also to get back into the area you're talking about. So as part of the design, we can take a look at that as an option and just make it so that if it was to be used in the future, that we wouldn't have to change the design. We could probably reshape that retention area to be used for a future opportunity if that's what we'd like to do.
And then I have one question too, because part of the problem that precipitated all of this was trying to get our buses out of the compound and I didn't see the arrows going from the compound to get to this evacuation route to get those buses out. Is that in another slide?
Well, actually, the best plan for the bus compound is when the roundabout goes in, it would be extremely easy for the buses to leave the compound, go through the roundabout, and then come right to the evacuation route.
That's going to be based on moving traffic and what happened before was that road was stacked up with cars and the buses couldn't get out. So I thought this evacuation route was going to be able to be a way for our buses to get around behind La Canto Middle School and come out and be able to use this to get out.
If there's buses parked on these two parking lots, especially the northern one where they drop off, they would come right through that little median opening that we just designed and head straight out the evacuation route.
We have buses in the compound, they go to other schools to pick them up.
Right. If they're in the compound, it would essentially, if the main road is all backed up to 491, it would come around where your guard is today if a future roundabout goes there and then come up north and leave out the evacuation route.
Sure. If you don't mind, I'd like to address about the buses. One of the biggest challenges we had back in 2015 when we had an incident out of La Canto was getting bus drivers into the compound, into the complex to get on buses to where we could get kids out. So this emergency thoroughfare, emergency ingress egress allows us to get bus drivers in to where we can get kids on buses and then get them out. So that's a very important part of the conversation we don't want to lose.
Okay.
Any other questions on this slide? Okay. So looking at a little, getting down into the weeds or a little closer design, phase one essentially is revising the parking lot to have more directional traffic going both directions on all the aisles and allowing better access to get out with two-way lanes. That was from the thoughts that you all had at the last meeting. We think this will function very, very well.
Let's go back to that a little bit. Just so, and I appreciate those changes. Just, I think when you first pull into the parking area, it does say, it does look like you can make a left turn and go down to any of those other lanes, but then it looks like there might be cars in there. Is that just didn't get corrected in the slide or we're not going to, we're not going to cause that first turn in the parking lot to go all the way down that lane?
No. Because this is conceptual, we just use aerial as the background. But in reality, the aerial [inaudible].
Oh, that's actually, I got you. Yeah. So there was actually, is there, was there actually a, oh, that's just cars. You're added a, there's like a median that's been added in there, is that right?
Right.
Okay. I see that's been superimposed or overlaid on the existing. I got you. Okay. Thank you.
The design will clearly show.
Yeah, yeah. Got you. Okay. Thank you. That looks much better. I mean, that's, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes, we agreed. As part of phase, so phase one is putting in the evacuation route. We have money for that and phase two is to re-stripe the parking lot. We have money for that. Phase two is essentially the roundabout on the very south end where West Educational Path ties in also with Panther Pride. And we've gone back and taken a look at it, feel that it's, it will work extremely well the way it's placed as a concept. When it gets in design is when we start looking at the drainage, how we make sure that the turning templates match for buses, fire trucks, et cetera. So, any questions on the roundabout?
Is it, is it going to be a flat roundabout as far as, as opposed to a raised one or is that maybe just, that will be part of the design and not really, it's not a factor at this time?
As of right now, as a concept, we've done survey out there to make sure we can fit it in and right now it'll be flat with 2% slopes to run the water off of the middle just to get it off to the sides. And then there's an inner ring that's a little different color that's called a truck apron. What happens is when a bus or a large fire truck has to go around there, their rear tires could actually drag on that concrete pad and all roundabouts are pretty much designed that way with a little extra concrete to hold the weight and pressure of school buses and fire trucks. But according to the way we've designed this and the computer simulations, this will work extremely well in this location.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or for Eric or Johnny to answer, but if we, if our timeline right now is working, would we be able to, for this to be open for the new school year? I mean, I know that's what we, but I want to, you know.
Well, currently what we're looking at with phase one, so we're clear, being the access road and then the striping, that would be our goal to incorporate that next summer. Right now, Mr. Dixon's currently working with the county on the funding of phase two. That's why we broke it into two separate phases for you. We want to move forward with what we have right now and then when we get the funding on the second half, that probably would not be next school year, but that's an area we would look into probably the following summer.
Okay. Now, the roundabout, as we look in, as they come down West Educational Path to go into the school and they're going to go towards the schools, there's two lanes. There'd be a dedicated lane on the outside that we would have, would not enter the roundabout.
Would not conflict with anybody in the roundabout.
And then, but yet they could enter the roundabout and continue to take the first turn out of the roundabout and that puts two lanes on that road, which I know is there now, but is part of the plan, would there be re-striping of the existing road? Would that be included in this? Probably, I think I would assume it's not because we probably can't use impact fee money to stripe a road, but that would, wouldn't you agree that that would be an important part of this project?
Absolutely.
We've got a...
There'll be, there'll be additional striping, there'll be additional signage, there could be additional lining. There's a lot of things that we have to take a look at.
That could be even outside the scope of the impact fee money, right? I mean, on the existing road, I'm looking as you get down out of the turnabout onto the existing road, there would need to be some improvements there, correct?
I would say with striping, maybe signage, that is outside the impact money.
Right.
So when we start looking at construction estimates for phase one, which includes the evacuation route and the reconfiguration, striping in the parking lots, it's approximately 547,000. That's for the construction. And for phase two, when we get to that, we're looking at close to about 367,000 to install the roundabout and that would be under phase two when the money becomes available. So with that, I'd like to take any questions that you have or comments.
What is, what, what do we know of the positive impact this will have to 491 as of now? I mean, if this were all in place, particularly I'm thinking about phase two, if phase two was in place today, what, what would we potentially see different at the light of 491 and Educational Path?
I think what you would see with the roundabout is you'll see people getting into the school where that junction is much easier than they do today. You'll see them coming out of the school. The difficulty you have with the traffic signal is the timing needs to be adjusted. When I looked at it again this morning, your southbound left is a quarter mile long, your northbound right is a half mile long. The timing needs to be adjusted for inbound in the morning, then readjusted for outbound in the afternoon. That is a county-controlled traffic signal and we'd be glad to talk to them at some point if you desire that, but I think the signal operation isn't as efficient the way it's working right now, especially for these improvements that we're going to do.
Would there be an adjustment that could be done today for that and then would it need to be further adjusted when the roundabout goes in? Because the, so roundabout would enable more traffic to come through or is it, is the adjustment today going to work at least for now as well as it would benefit when we put in the roundabout?
I think an adjustment today would really help. And then when we see how well the roundabout works and another adjustment at that point, we'll probably have a lot more traffic coming in. The difficulty is that road is so narrow with defenses, there's not a lot of ride away to add another lane. I think you can, but that's a county road. It's up to them what they want to spend the money. But actually, one of my ideas was to add an extra lane so you could have two lanes coming in with one going out in the morning and in the afternoon, two lanes going out with one coming in and you just reverse that operation of that middle lane and you'd see a dramatic improvement of how you get traffic in and out of that area.
Do you find that there's more traffic turning south into La Canto than north turning into the, into Educational Path?
I'd say that you got...
I'm sorry, so if I'm coming, if I'm coming from Beverly Hills to La Canto and I turn right in, which is what I think you were talking about, maybe a...
Yeah, a half mile long.
Is there more traffic coming that way typically than is coming from the south and then turning in?
My estimate is about 60% of your traffic's coming from the north and 40% from the south.
Okay. That's what I was, that's what I, I kind of would have thought in that range, so. That's one hand.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, we've got, the money that you proposed on phase one and phase two comes to $915,028 and the amount budgeted is 667,50 from impact fees. So where's the difference?
Correct. That's not my judgment.
Yeah, now, what we're looking to do is I want to do phase one at 547 and change. We have 667 allocated. We know it's approved through the consultant of the county. So that's why Mr. Dixon already has a work plan for phase two and he's going to begin the process of trying to secure impact fee funding for phase two.
Oh, okay.
But what we did want to do is we didn't want to delay the progress on phase one while we're waiting on the funding for phase two, so that's why we're waiting for you today.
Will you still be talking about impact fees when we do phase two?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And my idea is that we would have this ready by the start of the school year, this evacuation route, ready by the start of the school year. I mean, would, is that, would... I still keep trying to figure a way that we can have the roundabout. And I know that's not to say you guys aren't looking to do that, but I know you're not going to promise that to us right now.
We don't want to tell you things we can't deliver. The potential is there. I'm not saying it's impossible. A lot of that depends on the funding, as Ms. Counts just pointed out. We have secured funding for phase one. We want to go with that right now, get it rolling. If we, depending on the time window of the funding on phase two, we might be able to incorporate that as well with the summer. I would love to be able to do that and get this one done, but right now I don't want to commit without a fund source.
So yet, on the other hand, for us to, to adjust that, I mean, there's no way we can do it during school year and put around that.
No, sir. No, sir.
It would have to be in between school year events, so.
Well, that's why, that's why...
The big concern is we lose a year if we can't get it done.
That's right.
And I know we're, you know...
We can be very creative. In the last two years, we have been doing fire alarms during school years, things that we've been doing a lot of things. We're trying to change that 60-day window because we as a district pay a premium, we know we do. When we ask people to do 180 days worth of work in 60, we're paying. So we're changing some of our business model, if you will. So we're changing some of our business model, if you will. And we have some thoughts, we're just not ready to go there yet. And as soon as we, we enter the design phase, one of the other goals we want to do with the higher profile type projects like this, we'd like to bring them back, as Mr. Bishop said, around 60% of the drawings. That way you have another opportunity, the roads, the pass-throughs, the things like that, see where we're at. And we definitely would love to have the feedback at that point before we touch the 100% design.
And then the other thing is, is with phase one, I, is there any event that can be good during the school year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So when we're talking, you're taking that into consideration as far as, at least by some, by next school year, you should be able to open that?
Phase one.
Phase one.
Yes.
I mean, the striping, I know you would have to, all that would be done part of the summer project.
I can see the website of the project, we could just name our schools and say...
That entire road can be built during a school year. So our goal is as soon as we can get, if we get the approval today, then we'll move towards construction design documents. As soon as we can develop those documents, we'll be back to the board asking for approval to bid, our standard procedure. We'll get it bid and then have, we can actually, we don't have to wait for that June 1 date to start. We can actually start in May and start on the road some of the other improvements out there.
I just, I, I, this is looking better than I could have hoped. And I think it's given us some, still some flexibility, some options. I never would have thought that I would be supportive of a roundabout.
I share your...
And I, and I think a lot of us, but I do think we are all starting to see where that, that really is going to have some, some both safety, you know, also as well as just better traffic flow. And so I'm, I'm very thankful. I appreciate the staff's work on this and I appreciate the consultant's work on it as well.
They've done a nice job. I know it's, we've got, it's, we're ready to start turning some dirt.
With that in mind, I'd like to approve the recommendation by George F. Young.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Ms. Bryant, well, second by Mr. Kenny, to approve the study recommendations by George F. Young, Dr. Kowalski, and the Education Council. Is there any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, seeing that all those are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes for a zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Debkowski. Thank you for, for being here again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And before we go to the next item, like I said before, we're committed to making sure the board is as well, as well informed as possible on that project. Now that they, we've been given the green light, we hope to come back before the board within the next six, at the most eight weeks with those design documents. So you guys can get some feedback as we go. Okay? The next item on the agenda I have this morning is the request approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Golden Road.
And, Mr. Bishop, I appreciate that, but I do want to comment on that other topic because Ms. Council had a good point about the buses. Because that's still, I mean, I know you've heard, I agree that, that bus issue, you know, we can look at that and come up with that plan for evacuation on what will be the best way to get those buses out of there. I know that'll be a part of your discussion and plans. Because you have a plan now. And when we have a second, that evacuation route, that could add, you know, there could be some changes on that.
They're going to have options, absolutely, yeah. Yes, sir. And we will make sure we lift that out, going right into the 60% of that stuff. Okay.
Yeah. That was just, that impacted other schools.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
Something too, I meant to bring it up, and it's really for Mr. Bradshaw. Mr. Bradshaw, at the Le Canto complex, there is, and I'm pulling it up on my thing so I can say, there is a designated area that's been designated for drone usage by Parks and Rec. And I don't know if you're even familiar with that.
I've heard of that.
I, well, I love drones myself and I think they're great. I do wonder if we need to look into that and it may be something either to give to Safety and Security Committee or, you know, I think we have two things. I think we have to look at it from the legal perspective if we are okay with that there. And then, and then maybe Safety and Security needs to look at that as an issue as well. You know, like, because I, I think that they're, I don't want to say anything much more than that for right now, but something with it. Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize for jumping in.
No, 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 you didn't. We kind of, still I don't want to say, so thank you.
I apologize for that. But yes, my second item is to request approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Golden Road.
Move approval of the personnel and support instructional people as approved on the Golden Road.
Second. Our motion by Ms. Council, second on Mr. Kenny, to approve personnel support recommendations as listed on the Golden Road. Is there any discussion?
I have one point of discussion.
Ms. Kowalski.
We started our SACS meetings and I heard in several of the SACS meetings, not just one, where students that were having trouble with testing might have done better with a, a different teacher, but we have, we have to make it easier for our teachers to get reading endorsed and allow these students another opportunity to move or stay with the teacher. So I remember doing mine years ago and it was laborious over the weekend and things like that. But just maybe the staff could take a look at how we could make it a little bit easier for these teachers that are technically out of field to get these endorsements. Maybe offer them a half-day sub or something like that and encourage them to, to get it done.
Absolutely. Ms. Council, I know Ms. Voitello is working, there's some requirements from the DOE regarding reading requirements. And so she is actually in the process of working on how can we help support teachers in, in doing that.
Yeah.
Versus, I, I know I went through the same course as you went through.
It's time.
It is.
So if we could, if we could do something as a district to help them and encourage them to, to do it, you know, a half-day sub is not going to get them a reading endorsement, but, because I don't know how many weekends I spent up at school.
We're looking at trying to embed some of that into the current professional development that they're having to do so that some of those points and things can count. Just like the teachers have to get the students with disabilities credits as well, well, now they've added the reading that they have to get as well. So we are aware of that and, and working towards that.
And I think it'll help the students when you have that ability to move them with these endorsed teachers.
And, and Mr. Hebert, I'm glad you lifted that out because I know that administrators are looking for the experts in their fields at their campuses to work tutoring and providing that professional development in hopes of, of supporting those. I, I have one other thing and it's, because it's human resources, it's probably an appropriate time. We've talked about this before, but I, I really just think it's time to lift it up again. We know we, we know we're challenged with trying to find substitutes, whether that's long-term or short-term at this point. We have something that we offer to our staff with regard to providing them a little bonus by, by letting them attend the regular play games in the district with their ID for them and their immediate families. I know that has been hugely successful and hugely popular. I know our family takes advantage of it and I'm probably sure anybody in here doesn't, you know, takes advantage of it in some way. I still question if that would be something that would be advantageous for us to both offer our substitutes to help them currently that are involved, maybe to stay involved, as well as maybe as a, an incentive for some to be involved. It, it's not, I know we tracked this before, it's not a huge financial impact. It does have some financial impact, but it's only regular play. It's not, you know, anything else. I'm not sure, and I know this is the challenge, it's hard to know because some substitutes could have a badge and use it that way. So I recognize that there's a thing with that. And maybe if it's, and it's a sticker for the school year that they get, if they, you know, they get a sticker after 10 hours of work or something. I don't know. But it's just something, I just think it's probably not, it's not going to cost us a whole lot, but maybe it's going to, it'll either keep somebody substituting or maybe draw some money through it.
Yeah, certainly that's something we can explore. I would, what I would prefer to do, if it's with the board, I would like to talk to the athletic directors and find out from their perspective because that's what it is, it's what they pay athletic programs at the schools because we don't give schools athletic monies. I'd like to speak with them, but I'd also like to sit down with our HR staff and think about the unintended consequences, like, for example, how do we manage that? For many, many years here in Citrus County, people have, we ran into a situation where people enrolled to become subs. They may have subbed one day and they pay their $6 every year and they just stay on the rolls, but they're not interested in subbing. So we'd have to go through a process of clearing that, that list out, if you will. We began that process a few years back because it's costing us money to maintain their fingerprints and the stuff that we have to do to make sure that...
And maybe it is that they, and, and I'm just thinking of that because I agree with you, maybe it's as simple as rather than finding that whole process and doing that, maybe it's just something where we issue to a substitute, there's a sports pass that they get and it's good for maybe on a semester basis or, you know, on an, on an annual basis and, and that becomes their way in.
Certainly something we can explore.
But I would agree because the, the badge system for the substitutes probably wouldn't work, but it, but if there's some way we can incentivize, and I agree, I, I think that's absolutely the appropriate approach to check with all the different...
Let me work with staff and come up with a proposed option, maybe come to a future workshop and show.
If, if the rest of the board sees any merit.
I, I see merit. I mean, kind of, I think the first year I was on the board, we had a little discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree. I think that there's, there's merit to me. I mean, I, I would like to give benefits, especially we're trying to get people involved.
More subs and more people.
Just think it's just something we can explore.
Yep.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bishop.
I did have a question in regards to the, the other forms here on the out-of-field assignments and certifications. So this, these, this information that doesn't include what are we tied along term subs, though, is that correct?
It could potentially. What we have right now, just so you know, we have 143 currently listed out of field. I want to speak with that, with that number to you in a second. Of those 143, we have 64 pending certification. So you, when you hear 143 out of field, that number's not very good compared to, we looked at last year, we had 92 out of field. The reason why we have so many more this year is the state has notified us that they're, they are running behind in issuing the temporary professional certificates. So that number is somewhat inflated. But when you back out the numbers of those who are pending certification from the 143, we have 79 people who are out of field. What we do to try to help those folks that we ask to teach out of field, we pay them, we pay them for successful completion of the certification exam. And we also pay their $75 to have it added to their certificate. If that is a, them teaching out of field is as a result of the administrator, school building level administrator needed them to teach out of field, if that makes any sense. Every year we reimburse between 20 and 30 folks that $200 and we also, like I say, pay a $75 certification fee. This, today we stand, as I stand here today, we have 79 people that are, that are literally teaching out of field that are not seeking a certification. This time last year, we had 80. So although the number 143 seems, you know, extraordinarily high, it's not because of anything we're doing here locally, it's the state is, they're lagging in their processing of those certificates.
The 69 you said that are pending certification, though.
64, yes, sir.
Oh, 64?
Yes, sir.
64 that are pending certification. Are some of those considered long-term subs then or are they all...
They could be, yes, sir.
They could be still.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is there...
But not all of them, no.
Is there any idea how many long-term subs we have? Like, I mean, to me, a long-term sub is because the position hasn't been filled, right?
It's a, yeah. The definition of a long-term sub is a sub who subs more than 10 consecutive days is considered a long-term sub. I don't have that information in front of me, but certainly I can email it to the board if that's, if that's what you'd like.
That's 10 consecutive days in the same position.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see that. I'm just curious. I have some SACS meetings I've been to, you know.
So you want to know, I want me to try to get your requests. The question is how many long-term subs do we have in classrooms right now?
Yes, that's what I'd like to know.
And I would tell you, we had, when I was at Citrus River High School, we had a lady who came from retirement corporate and she was a long-term sub in the English department with me. And she just, for years did not have any interest in, in making that certification possible. And she was one of the best English teachers I had. And so these long-term subs.
We have some extraordinarily talented...
Yeah, yeah, we have some people, they just don't want to go through all that paperwork, but they want to be in our classrooms every day. And, and she was, she was an extraordinary teacher.
It is, I know we've talked about the legislation, is we keep hoping that they're going to give us some flexibility with regards to people that retire and that are interested in coming back, not the ones that have waited out a year. Those, those you have a little more options. Is there any, I know you guys have looked in the past, of contracting service and using a contract service, is, would we get, would we garner any potential later long-term subs or more importantly, maybe some teachers?
Yes, sir. A few years ago, we brought to the board SS Solutions as a contracting service for, and at that time, we just, we asked the board to allow us to use that contracting service for special need or hard-to-fill areas. And we've been enjoying that over the last couple of years. As far as teachers who retire now, they don't want to set up the, the year and then wait to come back, we haven't explored that. Certainly that's, that's a little of the board, we can, we can look at doing that. Absolutely.
I think it's just a matter of making it available in the toolbox for you is more than, I don't know that it's anything more than that. I've, if we, if, if we can get out of the way in giving you a toolbox, then I think that's...
You know, especially when you start talking about those very hard-to-fill singleton-type of areas of certification, you're talking about chemistries and physics and those things, those are very difficult to find. That would definitely put another tool in that toolbox you speak of.
And I don't, it's an interesting thing because somebody who retires and maybe it's just all of a sudden they realize, okay, I don't have to work. And there seems to be a lot less, it changes the, the relaxation of the teaching. Because the teaching field, as we all agree, has been tough. And it is stressful. I'm sorry, Mr. Wolf.
I'm just going to say, there's a lot, there's more barriers to retirement than just the one year. A lot of times, they're, they can't make more than a certain amount of money. And we've been very flexible in how we've been trying to meet some of these demands. We have, we've hired some teachers, retired counselors back for three days a week because they can't work. If they work five days a week, they're going to exceed the amount of money they can make. But we can't find guidance counselors, so we're willing to hire back...
That's harder with, with teaching because there's, you know.
Right. But even if we could get a situation where we had two certified teachers that split a classroom, we'd be interested in considering it.
I've always been curious if some, I mean, we've heard this, but I've never seen it, is if they wanted to just teach, you know, two classes a day as opposed to a full load.
We, we do have that at high school level. At Citrus High School, we had a gentleman who wanted to teach physics when we were on 404 and he really didn't want to teach a whole year. That worked out great because they had an interest in the physics class with the student, number of students. And so it worked out great. He taught half a year and he understood that he wasn't going to be eligible for his health insurance and it was good. I mean, it worked out great. So we are looking outside the box to fill these needs, absolutely.
And I think we did it one time, it was, it was at elementary school teachers. We had people that wanted to be home with their young children and the two teachers were, one morning, one afternoon yesterday.
Job share.
It was job share, yeah. And that's.
And you know, something that I know we've been creative in is, so this is, please, this is not a criticism. It's always amazing to me still how people don't know that we have a job opening. And it's not that you guys aren't doing what you're, it's just, it's like, I'll have people go, I'll say, hey, did you look and see that job? Was, and like, no, I had no idea. I didn't check it today. I don't know if that's maybe something that on a periodic basis, maybe we just put a list of positions, not necessarily the schools even. Or maybe it is just subject area school or positions that these schools open, check for HR. And then we just run that every week or every other week on the Facebook or, you know, and Twitter and so forth, just to.
That's certainly, we have some cert, something we can do.
I mean, it's probably not going to cost us a whole lot, but I do think it gets out of sight, out of mind. I know there's some. Yeah.
We did receive several calls when we put it on Twitter and then you put it on Facebook and your site. We were saying, if you had a bachelor, if you have a bachelor's degree or an interest in teaching, please contact us. We received numerous calls for that.
So I just think sometimes it really does, people don't realize, oh, you would have hired for that. And then I'm thinking if it's one of those, you know, part-time positions may be available, instructional part-time positions may be available. You know, if there's one that that works with, then that's, so we're just trying to help.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Dodd, to answer your question about the long-term subs, we have about 40 or 45 right now, long-term subs, that we have been averaging. So they are in those vacant positions. We have about 30 that are, have bachelor's degrees that are waiting to pass the test, to pass either one section or all of the sections of whatever test they need to take to become certified teachers.
30 of the 45?
Yes, sir. 30 of the 45 have degrees and are working on passing tests. And we monitor that on a weekly, monthly, I mean, we monitor it very closely. We work with our schools very closely. We have purchased several books to help them. We have study guides for the general knowledge test, for subject area test. If someone calls and says, I need a, I need a study guide for this, this test and we don't have it, we go out and purchase it. So that they have that and we allow them to keep it as long as they need to. We are also putting into, working with Mr. Bishop and putting into place, our teachers will be paid to tutor our teachers or our long-term subs that need assistance. We are putting that out, after we get it approved through Mr. Bishop, we're going to put that out this week. The list of those teachers that can work, we'll collect those names and then either pair them one-on-one or we'll pair them into, like, if we have a group that need to take the general knowledge test, which we do, we'll pair them together to work with them and then monitor those pass rates.
And the funding for that, just so you know, the funding for that is offset by, by the use to go to CF and that is where it takes place at CF. But I feel like we have teachers that can teach and verify and so of course we allocate those funds to.
And I just have to compliment you, Ms. Swain, because I have a number of people that will call up and say they're interested in a job, but they didn't know how much it would pay or whether they could transition from whatever. And it's like, call Ms. Swain, Ms. Swain, you know, and, and many times I have found out that you've been able to justify, you know, a years of service by them providing documentation. And it's actually surprising, they actually can get a competitive wage in some cases. I'm not saying we don't want them to have more.
I'm very proud of our staff that you're going to talk.
But you're doing a great job. So thanks for keeping that up.
Thank you.
So if a principal has a long-term sub in a position, that, that is not a filled position, is that correct?
That is correct. On occasion, we have, for, let's, example, for maternity leave, we may have a long-term sub in that position, let's say, one month to six. Typically, it's one month to six months. Sometimes it may go longer. But those year-long are for those vacant positions. Yes, sir.
If they're in there for maternity leave or a pending leave of absence, we wouldn't have a position posted.
Yeah.
And the other positions, they will remain posted. That's why we say there's 49 openings, but there aren't really 49 openings. That's what we're.
And even if the teacher's out on maternity leave for the year, we go ahead and post positions because as we know, we are going to need those teachers, whether it be at that school or whether we move them to another school. But we will, if, if they're out for a year, even longer than six months, we go ahead and post it. We're going to need those teachers.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. So we do have a motion in a second on this, on the approval. I don't think we vote. So is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. That motion passes 4-0. We approve the instructions or recommendations. Okay, our next item on the agenda deals with risk management.
Yes.
Good morning.
I would like to request approval of the interlocal agreement between Citrus County, Florida and the School Board of Citrus County, Florida regarding the use of facilities and payment of school board employees working at shelters.
I move approval of the interlocal agreement between Citrus County, Florida and Citrus, in the School Board of Citrus County, Florida regarding the use of facilities and payment of school board employees working at shelters.
All right. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the interlocal agreement between Citrus County, Florida and School Board of Citrus County regarding use of facilities and payment of school board employees working at shelters. Is there discussion?
No, just another comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulating our, our staff and our superintendent that we locked our classroom doors last evacuation, where other schools across the state left them open and teachers were robbed. And so caduce to working in Citrus County. And so make sure the doors are still locked.
And I do want to thank the commissioners, our staff working with them and helping them that we could, we could get this because this really does, is important. And Mr. Bradshaw, I know you played a big role in this behind the scenes and doing that, so thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Serge. Okay, we're on to attorney legal matters. Mr. Bradshaw. We have the resolutions, yes.
The two resolutions that I forwarded to you, the first one, 18 dash.
Thank you.
Yeah, 18 dash two is the one that y'all requested that I prepare to go to the sheriff's office. So I'm, you know, to, you know, if you have any thoughts, comments, changes, modifications, any suggestions I could do. I would have to, something, pass the resolution, send it with a letter, I think that line on. Probably doesn't do good, I didn't have the resolution, but you know, so please advise me if it's a certain period of time.
I move approval of the resolution number 18 dash two, resolution regarding school safety.
All right, we have the motion. Oh, is there a second?
Is there, are we doing them separately?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Well, I think we should because we're going to put a timeline on the one, probably not the other.
I just want to make sure.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Couse, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve resolution, resolution number 18 dash two regarding school safety.
And I forget, two is the one to the sheriff?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so, but I wanted to just make sure.
Okay, so this.
I have to honor Bradshaw's recommendation not to put a time limit on it, but I'd like to have.
Put a letter to put a time, not, not, not in.
Not in the resolution, but maybe within a letter.
The whole withdrawal of that request, I think, y'all were looking at that, like, I remember at the last meeting correctly, you want to formally extend this to the sheriff and ask him to do it. Because depending on his answer, might depend on what you do with other options that you have.
We need an answer.
You need an answer, so I think that you should, you know, in the letter, put a time limit, whatever it is, you know, 10 days, 15 days. But it's not something that hasn't been discussed or thought about, so it's like, that's.
Correct.
And it wouldn't be, he couldn't consider it open-ended. So if, after an extended period of time of no response, we could proceed with any other alternative plan that we might have in mind.
You could go with any other alternative plan that you want. Now, I mean, I think the rationale for this was to.
One more time.
One more time, put it in writing to him. And if you say, let's just say 20 days and he doesn't, then you know that he has not, you know, he's not interested at this point. Doesn't mean in six months he can't come back and say, yeah, I'd like to do it at that point in time. Because he has to, he has to open the door for y'all to walk through.
I think we're trying to provide, I think we're trying to provide structure without trying to strong-arm and, you know.
Yeah. I mean, we're looking down the road here. I mean, we're not saying that we're ready to move on this right now, but it needs to be, if you have an option.
I think I said at the last meeting, and I appreciate all the time you're putting in at Parkland and I love having that. But I, I, that clip that you showed us, I anticipate that we're going to have some suggestions from the commission that you're on saying, asking us to do a little bit more than we're doing right now.
And Ms. Bryant and I were at a leadership conference with Clark School Association, we interviewed them. And, you know, district after district after district is looking at, at the very least blended programs. And in some case enhancements, which is more of the lines of what we're talking about. And we talked about, Mr. Dodd, the work you're doing there and that I think we, I think there is a common recognition to say, we can do more and this is one of those sort of.
I found a part of the hearing room floor. This is a copy of this resolution to the following two. I modified that to say copy of this resolution to the sheriff. I apologize on this.
Oh, not to the following, yeah, I saw you. Shove a little copy of the resolution to sheriff.
And I have it here. I made it correct.
So how, what is your advice then on the timeline? Should Ms. Couse amend her motion to approve the resolution, request a response within X amount of days? Or do you, what do you do as far as?
I think you approve the resolution independently and then if you want me to send it with a letter.
Right, okay.
Then I can do that and y'all just give me a comment.
And I don't mind you sending that, but maybe, and we can vote on this, but I'm wondering if, if Mr. Dodd, as the chair, is not opposed to it, that maybe it comes across, you know, that, just trying to keep it, that, that, that we're not, we're not thinking of it as a legal at this point as much as we're thinking of it as a board thinking. So would you be open to that?
Yeah, sure.
So we can, we can approve this and then why don't we make an motion about the letter to accompany it?
All right. So that sounds good. We do have a motion in a second on approving this resolution regarding school safety. Is there any other discussion on resolution 18 dash two? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes 4-0.
Just that, that I make a motion that we direct the chairman of our school board to send the resolution to the sheriff with a 15-day or 20-day, whatever you think.
I mean, I was, you know, I was even thinking 30 days.
I don't have a problem with that. I think that's still, so with, with a 30-day response and that's it?
That should get it plenty of time.
Any suggestions from the date of the letter?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
From the date of the letter.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Couse for us, for the school board to direct the chairman to send a letter to the sheriff requesting response within 30 days and the date of the letter. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those.
Just the only thing I was going to say is, I would just welcome you to, if there, if you feel like there's any input from the Parkland stuff to include or whatever you, you know, the discretion of the chair.
Feel free.
Yeah, just, I think we're, we're giving that discretion to you.
Okay. Very good. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes 4-0. Very good. Now we have one other resolution for us.
I'd like to move that we approve resolution number 18 dash three regarding school safety.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve resolution number 18 dash three, the resolution regarding school safety.
And again, this is, one is to the legislature where it's an open resolution regarding the support of a limited guardian program.
Right. And it's, obviously, this resolution deals with options for, you know, putting together a guardian program.
Right.
And, you know, there's been some discussion on other avenues for that. You know, I certainly hope the sheriff will agree to, you know, provide the training and the certification or the approval of that program. But other options that could be available would include, I hope, down the road is looking at, you know, the Florida Criminal Justice Standards Training Commission offering it as a part of a program. Like they do a law enforcement academy, corrections academy. And there's those all over the state that people can go to for the training. We have one with the Kuchi Technical College right here in our backyard that we could put together a program right here in Citrus County that could, if the legislature would allow it, certify guardians and put them through the required training that's in the law.
It's going to be my next thing is to ask you to write a letter to do that, and just to direct you to write a letter to do that, so.
I will, you know, definitely.
Because I think that is exactly the direction, I think that is the appropriate direction of the legislature.
Was there any discussion at the FSBA leadership meeting or anything on the guardian as far as this goes with trainings, certifying?
The problem, the only thing that was roundabout is redirecting the guardian money.
Yes.
And whether the Florida School Board Association should take a position on it. And I think while the, the direction was to not, it was really split. And it wasn't that people felt one way, entirely one way or the other, but it was trying to say, we are, we, you know, we're trying to meet mandates we don't have money for. That's really what was driving that conversation. Am I, do I, am I correct, Ms. Bryant? But what I do get the impression, and Ms. Bryant can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's just, I think, large, at least in rural communities like ours, strong support for a guardian option. And that, interestingly, I think we're more in the minority of districts that don't have that available to them because their sheriff is not doing that. So other districts are moving forward.
Even the larger counties are having trouble.
Yeah.
Even the larger counties, like Bay, Duval and Orange are all having trouble.
Yeah. So it definitely is, is an issue. Now, I think that you're apt to see something along this line incorporated into our FSBA platform. Then there will be necessarily about the funding of it. There'll be funding, I think, about funding security better, but not necessarily about diverting the money. Because I think there is strong support that the legislature is supportive of the guardian program and they see diverting money as moving, is moving their commitment away from the guardian program. That seems to be what, what they're saying. They're not, they're saying they don't believe, there should be more funding as much as it is. They see doing that is, is kind of backtracking and they don't want to backtrack.
Right. And could they allow guardian, guardian money to be used towards a guardian position?
See, that's where stipend.
And, you know, there's been some questions as to, as to that process. So, you know, that could, you know.
See, that was some of the undermining concerns that districts, and I think Ms. Bryant was, was with some of that too. And I, I, the problem is, right now, there's a closed conversation in the legislature. They have just closed down that conversation and they don't seem to be willing to open it up at this moment. I think those may be some conversations they have in the during session. Which is why I think a letter following this could address maybe some of those types of things.
Okay, so in reference to the resolution, is there any other discussion before we vote?
Hopefully we get attention.
All those in favor of motion to approve resolution number 18 dash three, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes 4-0.
I'd just like to add, if we could now move that our chairman drafts a letter, or not drafts, but sends a letter with this resolution to our local delegation, legislative delegation, which includes Zulo and Simpson, as well as to the president's, the president of the senate, as well as to the speaker of the house, sharing this. And then also if you would include the elements that, the sentiments that our board has discussed with regards to flexibility and the need for, like, flexibility of usage for paying for guardians, training of guardians, paying for guardians. Because we're, we're not, we're, we just, we need to be able to do this. And we need that flexibility, but also to include the flexibility of Department of Law Enforcement, training and so forth options.
All right, very good.
I was just, just a thought, ran through my brain right now. In your letter to our sheriff, this might not be the time to do it, I don't know. You might mention his support for helping us with the guardians. I don't, I don't know, maybe not.
Oh, my, with the sheriff?
Maybe the sheriff used to be about the resolution and that's it. Maybe when you talk to him.
Yeah, I sort of see it.
Because we want him in.
Yes, that's, yeah, yes. I mean, that's the best way to go is that, you know, the first resolution that we get, the sheriff's on board with it. And that we don't have to, you know, but on the other hand, we need to look down the road too.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm with you there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be nice because he said no so many times.
I just don't believe in that was last time.
Yeah, so one more time.
So that was my, my motion, if I could, if we would direct the chairperson.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, for the chair to send a letter with this resolution to those individuals on behalf of the board. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes 4-0.
And Ms. Dell, when those go out, if you could send a copy to board members.
Anything else? Okay, all right. Okay. With that, I'm going to open up for public comment again. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Or anyone like to speak for the board? No cards? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to any other business that needs to come before the board and board members. Mr. Mullin?
Busy with those schools. Crazy. I went to Sherry Preston's.